All right, I think I got six o'clock straight up if we're ready to go, Sue. All right. All right, this is the city council work session for September 8, 2020. A roll call, please, Sue. Or I can do the roll call, I suppose. All right. Counselor Finley.
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Here.
All right. Soon to be counselor Bryce Cofield.
Present.
Okay, and at the moment, it looks like we do not have Denise and we do not have Jules at the moment. But we will try to push on here. Anything on the, well, before we start, just, we were talking about the fires and all that, but, you know, to all of our friends in Mill City, what's left of Mill City, and Glide, and Silverton, and Gaston, Ashland, the Mackenzie River area, Washington, California, Colorado. Everybody be safe out there, and all the crews that are working all into the night on this stuff, be careful out there, so. There we go. Council agenda and meeting, anything that you would like to see changed on the agenda? For, for the business session? All right. All right, any other business items that you might like to add for the, for the business session? Again, hearing none. All right. I believe it is my distinct pleasure to introduce Municipal Court Judge Larry Blake. Good evening, Judge Blake.
Evening, Mayor. So, it's my pleasure to swear in our new counselor, and so, Mr. Cofield, if you would raise your right hand, and repeat after me. And I promise not to talk fast or mumble.
I promise not to mumble.
Okay, okay, all right. I'm Bryce Cofield.
I'm Bryce Cofield.
Do affirm that I will.
Do affirm that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of.
And the ordinances of.
The city of Newburgh.
The city of Newburgh.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a city council member.
Of a city council member.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I normally, I normally, now that you're under oath, I usually ask other questions that have been given to me, but nobody gave me any other questions to ask you.
Ah, there it is.
Which is kind of weird, because normally, there's all these salacious questions, and there's nothing out there, so congratulations for doing that part.
That's great, you, when you live a perfect life, there's very little questions.
I know, that's, that's, it's, it's a little disappointing for somebody in public life, but we'll have to put up with it. Anyway, congratulations, you should be very proud.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No, thank you, Judge Blake, thank you, thank you so much, and take care, be well. All right. All right, so, I don't believe we see Denise as yet for sort of introductory type stuff. But, so let's just go around the horn and make it sort of, give us a brief, brief elevator spiel on who you are. And, and you can, you can define that however you might like. And, let's start with Dan. Because you're top right on my screen, so there you go.
Thanks. Setting the, setting the pace here. I'm Dan Weinheimer, I'm the city manager, I have been in the position since the end of February, so not terribly long, but, am from Washington DC originally, grew up on Capitol Hill, went to DC Public Schools, didn't realize there was life on the West Coast until much too late, but, went to Syracuse University and to the University of Southern California for my graduate program. And have worked for six municipalities, and I'm super happy to be here.
Alrighty, thank you. Let's go Stephanie, Counselor Finley. Denise, we're just doing a brief intro, so.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Finley, and I am counselor for District Six here in Newburgh. And my backward, my background and my education is in social work and psychology. And I spent most of my professional career working with usually children and families in, in mental health, addictions, domestic violence, and poverty issues, and so that's nearest and dearest to my heart. When we had our first kiddo, we decided to move closer to family, so we moved from Portland here to Newburgh about seven, about seven years ago now, here in September. This is where my husband was born and raised, and so we have lots of family around here. And I am lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom for my kids, and get to sit on some boards and do some other kinds of work in the community.
All right, Elise, how's about Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Sure, hi. Elise Yarnell Holloman, and, I have lived in Newburgh for a little over four years now, and grew up in the South Beaverton area, near Roy Rogers, and, went to a lower high school, and then went to the East Coast with a school in Philadelphia, studied political science, lived on Capitol Hill, Dan, didn't know that connection, for a year, and worked in the Human Rights Department, actually around transgender rights, and, since then, I've moved back and really just needed a job, and Providence hired me, and here I am still working there. So, been there for almost nine years, and really have become passionate around social justice within healthcare, and specifically marginalized communities, and how to bring access to healthcare in those communities, so, serve on Taste Newburgh here in town. I am a part of the Community Wellness Collective and Affordable Housing Group.
Awesome. All right, Truman.
I'm Truman Stone, I'm the city attorney, I started in October of 2013. I've been practicing law since 1992, yes, 1992. I grew up mostly in Iowa, went to Bethel College in St. Paul, Minnesota. I got married in Washington DC, in Washington Heights. Went to law school at Northwestern School, Lewis and Clark, and that's about it.
All right, Karen.
I'm Karen Hoffman, I'm the city engineer. I've been in Newburgh since December of 2014, so almost six years. Been an engineer for, since 1993. So my connection to Washington DC is, my dad was in the Marine Corps, and was stationed actually, when worked for the Commandant and the Marines, so we were stationed back in DC for several years on that, on that note. And then I actually lived in Hawaii for eight years also, so. There you go, so, that's, that's me.
All right, Denise.
Hi, I'm calling from my car, because it's the only thing with power and internet at my house. I have been in Newburgh for 23 years, I moved here from the East Coast, I lived in Ohio and in New York, I grew up in upstate New York, which is much, much like Oregon. My degrees are all in political science or public administration, but I've spent most of my early working career in restaurants where you learn a lot about people. So, that's how I got here, I've been on the council for 12 years, and I, I was compelled to get on the council because of affordable housing, where I first met our mayor, sitting in the back of the room. And I hope, I, I don't have the best internet, but I have internet, so, that's all I have.
Nice, nice. All right, Sue, I don't know if you can hear us, or if we can hear you.
And Jules is also asking to come in.
Oh, Jules wants in.
She made the same mistake I made.
All right. All right, while we're waiting for Jules, all right, so I'm Rick, I've been mayor now for one year, or one year and like nine months, I guess. And it's been nothing but fun the entire time, so I, my connection to DC, my, my mother was actually a State Department official, so she worked for the State Department, so they spent a lot of time in Foggy Bottom. Both of my older two kids went to George Washington, the oldest one, well, he's going to eventually graduate, and the middle one ended up coming back and graduating from Oregon. So, and then what else, and I grew up in Hawaii, so that's a connection with that. And I think that's it. And lived, oh, lived in Newburgh for 21 years, married to Lisa, and I have three boys, so there we are. Jules, we are doing introductions, so tell us about yourself.
Alrighty, well, Jules, originally from Michoacan, Mexico. I lived there for five years, but I don't remember much, and I've pretty much ever since been here in Newburgh, Oregon. I went to the University of Oregon for four years, and just studied abroad in Mexico City for one year. And so now I'm back here, just doing, working, worked a little bit with some of the schools, also with some nonprofits. And I think I really like working with nonprofits, doing some of that work and community outreach. It's definitely where my passion is at, working with my community, seeing, you know, like, all the people who helped me get to where I am right now, and also helping create the path for, you know, the future leaders, which are coming their way, so, that's a little bit about me.
All right, and Bryce, you be, you being the newest, you get to go last.
Thank you, yeah, Bryce Cofield. Originally from Los Angeles, California. The most important thing to know about me is I'm a huge Lakers fan, so you know, I'm really dedicated, because I'm here, and Lakers are, you know, in playoffs right now. Tore my Achilles recently, and the person asked what color cast, and I told them I wanted purple and yellow, so there it is, purple and gold, actually. Dedicated. Yeah, I am married to Carrie, she is awesome, she's by far the, the, the strongest, most graceful person I've ever met. And really, like, the only reason why I can be here, because we have a wonderful son named Kyrie, who's about a year and a half, and literally running around now, so that's fun, I get to sit here with you all while she gets to chase him. Education, experience-wise, so, did my undergrad in Claremont, if you're familiar with the Claremont Colleges, where I was an Africana Studies major, studying experiences of people of African diaspora. Did my masters at Azusa Pacific University, in college counseling and student development, that's also where I'm currently doing a PhD in higher education. So yeah, I've done a lot of school, I love education, love research, and I'm excited and honored to be here with you all.
Alrighty, well, thank you, and welcome, welcome Bryce. All right, and Denise, you were gonna, I think you were gonna do a little, I don't know, about our characters, you found out about all of our character, I wanna.
Yes, I did, and I sent you all a chart, and it was actually really kind of fascinating. Because when you look at all of our personality types, Rick and Dan are the same. Elise, Jules, and Bryce are the same, Stephanie and Truman are the same, and I'm closest to Elise, Bryce, and Jules, except I'm an introvert. So, basically, what that, what that says, and why I did that, was because we all know about ourselves, and we expect, we expect from others what we expect from ourselves, and that's just not fair, since we're different people. So I thought, by making a chart of all of us, we can use the skills we have as, as people, we're all people, people, right? To better understand each other and give each other grace as we, as we are talking about how we work together. And I feel like I was frozen the whole time.
We can hear you.
Okay. So, um, I'm in my car, so it's, I'm balancing all my things, but, Bryce and Stephanie, Jules, and I are what you would, we are people who, our passions are to serve other people. That is, that is what we get up in the morning to do every single day. We do it a little slightly differently. And then, Elise, and, or Stephanie, they want all the information, they want to know everything about everything. And then we have Rick and Dan, who are the boss, they, they're super leaders, they're a little impatient, but they'll give you a lot of grace if they feel like you know what you're talking about, so if you go to them with stuff, make sure you have all your details in order. We all have negative things. Being impatient, I'm, I'm, because I'm the only introvert, I'm often, I'm often seen as very cold and distant. It's just, that's, that, I'm not at all, but that's how I come across. Others are more passionate and draw people to them. So, my, my question is, I, I don't know if you read it or not, because I did end up getting it done a little late, due to my, my other life's issues, but, does that, do you feel like that represents you? And I think the only thing that's different on mine is that it says that I'm very organized, but I feel like I'm only sometimes organized, and that I will often, if you tell me on Friday to do something, don't call me on Wednesday, because it, it won't be done, it will be done on Friday. But, so I just wanted to talk about the things in your personality for just a few minutes, and how you like people to work with you.
Yeah, that, that is, that is awesome, I see that I, I can come off as arrogant and don't deal with emotion well. Okay, yeah, that's, that's probably pretty true, actually, no, I'm just, I, does it, but everybody else, does it, does it seem that that's, I mean, does that identify you as best as you can in a chart?
It gave me three options, I took it again, because I was like, I bet I changed. And I think the whole point is that you're not supposed to change, and I didn't change, it's annoying. Yeah, ENFJ through, and, I also, I all share that I'm very obsessed with Enneagram, and it's, you know, somewhat similar. And take my, my team through it, and again, I always am hoping that I'm going to change to something that I want to be, and I think that that actually says a lot about my personality, is that I want to come across that I don't care what other people think, but I absolutely care what other people think, and try to make everyone happy, and that can get me in trouble, I have my whole life. And so, grace, when I'm trying to walk the line of both sides, but then, you know, need to decide when to step into the fire for what I really am passionate about. In terms of like, justice is really important to me, so like, I, that's, I'm an eight Enneagram, by the way, same as Donald Trump. And, you should Google your, your celebrity match, it's crazy, but, um, yeah, so I, justice is extremely important to me, and it comes out of work all the time, of if I think something is unfair, then I end up getting a lot more heated about it, and won't let it die, and kind of die on the hill for it, where on most things, I can kind of let it go and, and move on for the greater good, but, yeah, that's a little about me, and how, what bothers me.
All right, who else, who else would like to share?
Hey Denise, thank you for your, your work on this. Yeah, it was interesting, I think all in all, it's pretty accurate. Yeah, strong ideas, values, charisma, I think Elise and I are pretty much twinsies, if you couldn't tell, looking at us, pretty much twinsies. Although it's interest, it's interesting, right, I think naturally, maybe we're drawn to like our weaknesses to figure out what's wrong with us, and midway down, it says, the base of a lot of their own work, let's see, is their own success, they lose confidence, not great decision makers, so pardon me to laugh, considering there's two folks, or three, including Jules, of us that are on here that are not great decision makers, so we're gonna have to try to figure that out, navigate it, because I imagine we'll want to make good decisions, so it's good to be conscious of that, so I can work hard and hopefully make, make better decisions in life.
Yeah, I mean, similarly, I think to Elise and Bryce, they went over a couple of things already, but like, first of all, like, I don't think of myself as an extrovert, and I took it twice, and I got the same response, so, I'll have to do some more digging in that area, but yeah, I think very strong ideals and values, that's who I am as a person. And I also agree that I do not speak up unless I really feel like I have to, but when I do feel passionate about something, I will definitely speak up. And then one of my, I think one of my weaknesses is definitely like, where, what it's talking about, like, if I fail at something, then I feel like that, that really puts me down, or I, I put myself down for that, so that's one area, and I'm also very idealistic. So I need to, I think, I know this about myself, but really open up to different ideas and different perspectives, and I think being on council has definitely helped me push myself a little bit more out of my idealistic views on that, so, yeah.
All right, who else?
I don't know that it actually comes as a surprise to anyone, that that is what I am. Although I can switch a little bit, I think. So, the funny thing about it is, I'm always the one that's like, just give it to me straight, don't beat around the bush, so that is definitely me. I'm definitely direct, and I like people to be direct with me, and I will argue until I am dead in the ground. And I know that about myself. But yeah, probably pretty, pretty close to what I am, and I told Denise, I took this years ago, and I had a kind of guess, I could remember some of it, but I couldn't remember all of it, and then I tried to take the one she sent me, and my internet has been terrible, and so I haven't been able to do it again, but I suspect that's probably where I would land again.
All right, anyone else? But I just have a weird story about taking this test, so I, I mentioned that my, my mother was in the State Department, well, my father was the tandem couple, so she fought, she followed him around for years, and then he followed her later in life. And so oftentimes, they'd go to an embassy or consulate, and they, and he'd try to find a job. And the funny, and he was this big, sort of bombastic, very, very extrovert, super talk-to-anybody kind of guy. But he was going for a job at USIS, which was the Information Service, so it was basically the library. And they needed him to take this test, so he decided to fudge it to become this incredible introvert, and we used to die laughing, thinking, that is absolutely not you, you just fudged the test. But, there you are, there you are, so that's, that's my dad, so, more than you needed to know. All right, anything else on this stuff? That's good, Denise, thank you.
I'm not, how do you think it's going to impact Dan and Rick to be the same, that's a little scary.
Yeah, right, right.
I think we can coexist.
Yep, well, I think we better both be prepared whenever we talk, I guess, is what I get from it, we better.
Exactly.
Good thing they have the rest of us. We need to be prepared to talk to you, you don't take us seriously if we're not prepared.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I use this always, when, usually when boards are in trouble, and they invite me, because they're falling apart and don't know what to do, and they're all going to leave, and they hate each other. So, so I go in, and we do this, and we sit down and talk about it, because, like, I, I had a person leaving a board, because the president kept calling her on a Wednesday for something due on a Friday, and it was just causing so much rift between the board, just the different styles, what they cared about, how they thought about things. And once we kind of went through this exercise, we were a little more accepting, or they were a little more accepting of each other, so that's why I like to do, why not do it before the crisis? So now we can all understand each other just a little bit better.
Sounds good, thank you. Anything else on that, folks, do we, we'll keep the charts close at hand as we, as we move through, you know, so we can check. And I think actually, if I look at this right, one of the things that is really important to me is accomplishing goals. So, I think that's about the best segue that I'm going to get for the next part of this discussion. So Sue, if you can queue up the goal thing, that would be great. All right. So anyway, and I, I will just launch in, but let me sort of preface this by saying that I, I think there's been some, you know, discussion or uncertainty about what the goals were meant to be, and, and all of that, so this is an attempt to sort of flesh that out a little bit. And it's also a living document, so this is by no means inclusive, it's not exhaustive in any way, it's just trying to maybe make things a little clearer. So, next slide, please, Sue. All right, so here's our, here's our mission statement. City Newburgh serves its citizens, promotes safety, and maintains a healthy community. Next slide, please. And the vision state, statement, Newburgh will cultivate a healthy, safe environment where citizens can work, play, and grow in a friendly, dynamic, and diverse community, valuing partnerships and opportunity. All right, nothing particularly out of the ordinary there, and I think it's hits a lot of the goals which are on the next slide. Right, here are the goals that we came up with in January of this year. In short, customer service, DEI, housing affordability, urban renewal, and sustainability. And these, I think it was, at the time, it was Stephanie, Denise, Elise, and I, I think, were on this, and that went through this at the time. Next slide, please. All right, and then, you know, when we, when we look at the, the goals themselves, I think four of them could very much be considered longer-term values that require some form of adaptive change. And the one is really a task in terms of urban renewal, and that's a, you know, something you can accomplish and check the box, the others will probably go on and on well into the future. So this is a draft or a living attempt to frame these goals, their intentions and significance. And then the objective to modify, adapt, and improve in the listed areas. As you remember the discussion, some of them, and particularly, I think the first school talked about some of the, the problems that were, that we had, human resources, legal problems at the time, and so that was, was part of the impetus. Next slide, please. All right, so the, the goals are not in any way mutually exclusive, they often appear in multiple, in multiple, so, using an example of sidewalks, you could argue that that would be good for DEI for people who are not mobile, it could be good for sustainability with more walking, potentially depending on the area where we make new sidewalks or repair sidewalks, it could help with affordable housing issues. So again, and then if we're doing it in the urban renewal area, then that would hit that one as well, so they're not meant to be mutually exclusive, but sometimes they're going to have to be balanced, as they can not necessarily compete, but the costs can compete. So, that's something I think, and Denise and I talked about this the other day, that that's something we, you know, of course, if we had all the money in the world, things would be different. And then both internal and external conditions or partners will frame these goals, so, next, next slide, and again, if you have questions or anything, just, just holler. All right, so this is just a means to, to figure out how to evaluate, and I think we've talked about this before, but in any of these goals, we probably need some form of baseline data. We, we've talked about it probably most exhaustively on the question of DEI, to know, you know, where it is we stand with, you know, the BIPOC population in our, in our, among our employees, and then, you know, how many Spanish speakers and that kind of thing, is the baseline data. And then the internal inputs and external partners, so depending on what we're working on, those will become part of attempting to perform in these areas, and then finally, once you have the data, you've done a period of time, there should be a moment where we can evaluate how far we've come in these goals. So, next slide, please. All right, and this is just sort of some spitballing on what some of these might look like for customer survey, survey, or customer service. So, Will Worthy and Chief Cosmicky provided during their, their program that some of the things that they mentioned, training, onboarding, operating standards, recognition, and rewards, those are not currently happening throughout the organization. And then Lacy shared that the objectives and intentions of communications, because a lot of this will have to be communicated then to the general public, both in terms of what we're doing, but also how we respond to them, so. Some of the early baseline questions would probably be who responds to the majority of internal requests. Certainly, I'm sure IT is up there in terms of the internal request, and then the internal, external request, you know, you can imagine certainly it would be Police Department, Public Works, Library, would be the ones that would have the majority of contact and billing, of course, so. The internal input is to determine how we are the internal input as to determine how we are serving our customers. So see click fix, we've talked about as as the means you could take a picture and send it in. Public Work Maintenance has a means to report a problem. And then I'm not sure if there are other means to provide feedback. I think you can submit to the police department if you have a complaint or a compliment. But other than that, I'm not sure what other ways. And then external partners, I think Will and Jeff mentioned that there are training modules that they have that can be used for this. You know, again, if we if we start to implement some of these things, it it could in many ways go from zero to how many. So next slide, please, Sue. All right. And then the evaluation performance using the baseline data, how can or should progress be measured? And these are just, again, thoughts that could be the number of trainings that we're doing for customer service and the participants, the how how many or how many staff members are recognized, number of complaints, the time from complaint to resolution, and then maybe a survey for the the consumers, the external consumers of our service. And then, you know, any other thoughts that people had on what might be evaluated? The next slide, unless people have something. Yeah, go ahead.
On the, on the other one, one of the things I've found is that if we talk about customer service internally, and one would be making sure we have clear values set when we hire new people, that people will match what we are intention. Number two would be not only customer community satisfaction, but job satisfaction as well. Those are, because you will not be a great customer, or you will not serve our customers great if you are, yourself are not happy.
No, very.
So that was be my two others.
Yep, very, very good point. So I'll make notes of those. And all right, anything else, folks, on on customer service that that comes to mind?
And in looking at sort of data, this isn't necessarily around evaluation, but I think it'd be good to to do like an internal review as if we're thinking about just compositional diversity. You know, I think it was, it was striking to me in August, you know, when there are questions around the racial identities of folks historically on the city council. And we don't track that data. So I imagine that would be an example of something that me, that we might want to actually track. So we could maybe decide as a council or a community, which demographic information we feel as though would be particularly important. But that would be something I would probably recommend. Because it's hard to think about goals pertaining to compositional diversity if we don't know where we're at and tracking some of that demographic data.
Yeah, and I I think you're right. We've talked about that. I know Dan and I have talked about that, that 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 just the fact, the simple fact that we don't know, you know, how people self identify among the hundred and forty employees, you know, is an indication that it may not have been considered as much as it as it might have been. So but that's great. Anything else, folks, on customer service?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When looking at, you know, this is a tough one because it's hard to measure, but you know, I look at the the line item that says number of trainings and number of participants. And I think we need to talk about depth when we talk about that, because I can go sit in a training that, you know, is cheap and is, you know, four hours and my whole department can sit there with me and we just get to like put a check on that. And I think, you know, from my perspective, better training rather than more training, maybe both. But I think, you know, that's where I kind of get hooked up on stuff like this is that I don't, when you're talking about a cultural shift, I think talking about not just sitting your butt in a seat in order to get your checkmark, but actually taking that information, getting the best information that's out there in the training in the first place, but then actually tracking how we're using that training in our department and how things have shifted because of that training, I think, is what I'm interested in. So I'm interested in sort of the relational aspect of trainings rather than did you show up and look at your phone for four hours and then your department gets to, you know, check the box? So I know that's difficult and that's hard to sort of measure. But I think looking at the types of trainings and what the outcomes of those trainings are being used in the departments is important for me.
That's very good. What maybe what Denise said about, you know, surveys among employees at intervals, maybe, or something like that, may. Other thoughts on customer service, folks? And I am taking notes, so let me know. Okay.
I would just say that I think that, you know, Dan knows how I feel about this and I'm sure a lot of you do, but like, at the end of the day, trainings are great, but then at the same time, there's just like baseline expectations. And I think for me, like at Providence, I mean, we're just like, we're moving full force ahead. This is who we are as an organization. These are the expectations. We're going to lose people over and that's okay. And we're going to start to be reflective of our community. We're going to completely revamp our job descriptions because we're recruiting the wrong people. Not the wrong people, but we're missing a group of people. And we need to look at ourself as an organization and not put it on our staff to get there, but rather get there as the leadership team of who we are and where we want to go. And then the staff can come if they, along if they want to come along.
I think, you know, I think that's a really good point, you know, I mean, and at the very end of this, you know, it'll say that, you know, that this in a lot of ways falls to Dan, but it also falls to the department heads. I mean, they are the ones that have to carry this out and, you know, right down the line. And and I think that, but I think you're right. And namely, you know, as 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 Elise said and Stephanie said, if this is a cultural shift, you know, it may be challenging, but but I think, you know, we've certainly determined that it's important enough, so.
I did, sorry, go ahead, Stephanie.
Go ahead. I can, I can wait.
Awesome. This could be potentially awkward, but I wonder what it would look like to also try to do an an initial assessment of the areas that we feel as though are most pressing in order to address customer service. Again, I'm sure it's awkward because nobody necessarily wants to be the one in an area that's identified with some of the most significant need. But knowing that, again, we can try to do everything all at once and that might be okay. It might be, in my opinion, sorry, there's Kyrie in the background. A little bit more beneficial to identify that the largest areas of need and then ask a question of why, right? Because to Denise's point earlier, some customer service is an issue because folks aren't necessarily enjoying their jobs or being compensated enough or what have you. Others, you know, may have customer service issues for myriad of other reasons. So that's what I would be interested in learning is which areas do we need to really focus on? And then what is the the why behind the the lack of performance that we would expect? Yeah, from from our areas. Right, clarify areas. Is, are you speaking about behavioral or are you speaking about departmental or or what do you imagine when you say area? Good question. So my initial thought is areas in terms of departmental. And then the behavior is more to like the why, like, why are we seeing shortcomings in the levels of of excellency that we would hope that these departments would would show? Right? So again, some could be like accountability. I know I've worked in spaces where customer service is poor because there isn't a level of accountability or expectations have not been made clear. Others, again, may be behavioral from other levels. But again, I'm just trying to figure out which are the areas and then what type of problems are we seeing? And then try to figure out why, because to, I think it was Elise's point, right? Trainings is great. I've done trainings, but trainings usually is most effective when it's a lack of awareness and knowledge. Right? The lack of awareness, knowledge is not always the reason why we're seeing a lack of of quality customer service. In which case, trainings wouldn't wouldn't be an effective approach to addressing that issue.
Stephanie, did you have something?
I did. So if everybody wants to look at my strengths and weaknesses while I say this, so the other, I take issue with the number of complaints line. Because if I, as a, when I was supervising people, if I went into a department and they said to me, we've not had any complaints at all, I'd say, well, what's going on? And I think when we talk about complaints, I think I like the the line that says time from complaint to resolution, because I think that's where we want to get to. But I don't think not having any complaints is necessarily a good measure of doing good work. And so what I would like to see, again, is really hard to measure. It's it's much more intuitive and it's much more relational. But I would like to see, how do we react and respond to complaints? What is our, what is our sort of culture around complaints? Do we go, ah, this guy is complaining again? Or do we say, you know what, this guy's complaining? And and then every complaint is a, is a place for us to do better work or adjust some things that that may serve lots of people better. And so when talking about number of complaints, you know, I hate to use a measure of, hey, we just reduced in our department, we used to have twenty five complaints a month and now we have zero. That, there may be a really good reason for that, but I would like to show your work on that and why that's happening and not just seeing a reduction in numbers, but a reduction in the practices that are resulting in complaints, if that makes sense.
Absolutely does. Very good. All right, anything else, folks, on customer?
Yeah. Yes, I have one more thing. I think just going along with the idea of having customer service that's more like guided towards like culturally specific, especially like when we're talking about talking to a lot of the Latinx community, because I think that the number of complaints or the reason, like, we also have to question why people aren't complaining and why maybe specific groups are complaining more than others, because if there's not that like initial, like, I'm going to go to the city hall and I know that someone at the front door is going to be talking to me or able to respond in Spanish or even in an English that I'm comfortable with. So I just think those little things are really important because I feel like they tie into all these other aspects. That's what we're talking about, customer service.
Very good, very good. Anything else on customer service, folks?
Sorry, Rick. I feel like.
No worries. No, it's.
You know, probably like, why did we appoint this man? He's going to talk so much. This is what happens. Dules, I love what you're saying, fully supported. And I think that's something to, we could probably take into account for each of these bullet points, right? It's not only just what's the number or the time, but like from who. So again, looking again at demographic data, I think is important, right? So again, I think about staff members recognized. Right? That would be good to know. Not only how many folks are recognized, but why are folks recognized? And then who's being recognized? For example, if it's our men that end up being recognized in a particular area, that might be, you know, an indicator of a highly patriarchal system, right? So that as an example, so that that would be something to take into account is looking at who is being involved in whether it's complaints or recognized or who's participating, all of that. I think this is really important as we're trying to make data driven decisions.
Yeah, and I think that that notion of data driven decisions to the extent we can is is really the key to it. I mean, you know, it's hard, you know, as Stephanie said, it's hard, relational stuff is hard to to document. But if there's ways to provide numbers to stuff, you know, it can be compelling. So all right, anything else on customer service?
Just real quickly, I guess, the the notion, and I'm not sure who sort of said it or touched on it, but, you know, I do think that it's important for the council to, you know, I think this conversation is is amazing and, you know, it's helpful to get that level of detail as to what you're all looking for. But I think it's also starting with values and helping to establish values for the organization really should start with you all rather than necessarily, you know, us assuming or us, you know, I mean, certainly we can clarify, we can, you know, add the color commentary, you know, additional detail, all those things. But, you know, I think that that involvement in customer service in particular of being able to make sure that we're on the right point in terms of hiring and responding to the community, et cetera. I mean, I I personally value the conversations of being hearing when we've screwed up, frankly, you know, I want to hear those sorts of things. And that is a value of mine that maybe goes with the the Myers-Briggs, but I don't know. But on some level, being able to improve because I've heard what is deficient is not for everybody, but it is a value. And and certainly, like, modeling that behavior for folks hopefully will will change the culture, but that culture will also take time. And so I think it's important not just to to share your values and to help us identify some core values as an organization, but it's it's the longevity of those things, you know, writing them down, holding us accountable for them, you know, going forward rather than spot and time or those kinds of things. And so those kinds of things as well, like documentation around these things so that we can go back to them and and really orient around them. I think that's where you're going to see long term change. And and I will say long term change in the sense that it will take a while to turn it around on that too. So just a little bit of patience as well.
I wanted to say one more thing that I'm going to tread lightly saying is that, you know, previously, we were pretty careful and, you know, learned that we should not be communicating directly with department heads, which I absolutely support. That being said, I think it's really important that this is a two way conversation of customer service between us and department heads. And I think it would be helpful for us to get to know department heads better as a council as a whole through presentations at work sessions so that we can be clear with this culture change. So it doesn't feel like a one way driven conversation. I feel like there's often times where there's murmurs of maybe we're not being clear enough as as a council as we should around specific goals. I know I can be very guilty of that. So I I really have appreciated Dan kind of calling me out a little bit on our one on one calls of like, you know, I really need you to be clear when you're talking about affordable housing, what that looks like to you. And so I just think it would be a good idea to to foster more of a relationship during work sessions with the department head so that they feel like we really are supportive of them and their, and the change, the change that we're asking them to make.
I appreciate you saying that. I think it's also the idea of beyond even just the specific goals, but building those relationships as a, an organization, you know, that that it's not a separate, you know, the brain and the body kind of thing, you know, that we can intermingle. Certainly, there are lines, but, you know, I think that what I heard, at least in terms of the goal setting, for instance, you know, department heads made a presentation and then left the room. So they were not completely clear on what was the result of goals. And so, you know, even structurally, you know, including staff and some of the the discussion, at least, you know, maybe not the decision making. Certainly, we can respect those boundaries and you know, learn and and make everything better by by having that clarity of, you know, or even asking, asking or answering questions during the deliberation. Those kinds of things can help a lot, I think.
Yeah, the, well, the the only thing I'll say, you know, on core values and, yeah, it, I mean, for me, these, and this may be that these core values go through all of these goals. And that, you know, customer service is sort of the most up for, you know, the most visible. But in everything, I mean, it's you know, are, you're, I don't know. In short, you're a public servant. I mean, everybody who's worked for the city of Newburgh is a public servant. You serve the public. And so in a professional manner. So I get what you're saying. It just, I think, you know, and I could, we can make lists of, you know, timeliness, professionalism, responsiveness, you know, culturally sensitive responses, et cetera. But at some point, it's, you know, I don't know, know you're, you're, you're employed by the city. And that's it. So I don't know. That's, that's maybe too simplistic, but anyway. All right, anything else on?
See, I have totally, totally different. I have a totally different thing, like when we're talking about goals. I mean, when we're talking about what our, what our values are. My my values are that we have a staff that is honest, that works to get to the yes with our, with each other and with our citizens and not, not so much like they're checking off their boxes. I actually I want to see the opposite. I want their heart to be in their work in a way that when they're approaching someone, they're doing it as if that person was their boss. Because technically they are, right? I mean, overarching, they pay the bill. But but still approach it in a way that's you know, just basic human values, not not work related checking stuff off values. That's my, but I'm a heart.
No, I mean, I totally agree. I mean, ideally, you know, working at the city of Newburgh would be the best possible place you could work in the world. Right? Ideally, that would be it. If you're in public service, the place you want to be is in the burg, just like Dan. So, I mean, I think that's, you know, I think that's really, and how do you do that? And you're right, Denise, absolutely. You know, it's not checking the box. It's not taking another. And you're right, Denise, absolutely. You know, it's not checking the box, it's not taking another training.
One way to do it is to see what they've already done, right? I mean, that's how I interview people. I'm like, tell me about a time when you, you know, people laugh at me for that interview style. But what it gets to in the end is this is a person who can step out of their job and do what I need them to do because it's the right thing to do, even if it's the wrong thing to do, maybe technically with their job. Like, like say police, right? They have a book with laws in it, but we don't want them necessarily following the law every minute. We want them to use good judgment to make a decision that doesn't destroy someone's life just because that person was having a bad day and made a mistake. But that takes judgment, so you have to be able to test if someone in some way has good judgment. And the only way you can do that is finding out what they've done that represents that to me. I mean, that's how I learned to, to gather people with the same values as I had or wanted to have around me.
Yeah, and I think, you know, like you said, I mean, that goes back to when you're hiring somebody and, you know, the onboarding that, that Will was talking about. You know, if we make sure that we're looking for people that are versed in customer service and they, they understand what that means, then that would be a part of the, the, both the hiring process and, and onboarding people, so. All right. Um, anything else on customer service, folks? All right, uh, let's try the, the next one, Sue. So DEI. All right, so, uh, again, back to the same model of baseline data, an equity audit, determine status regarding current staffing, both boards and citizens advisory committees, language capability, hiring protocols, recruitment and outreach, and customer service, as we mentioned. So, and again, this is not exhaustive, it's just, uh, sort of the first idea of where we stand on the subject. And, you know, as Bryce said, you know, not knowing, you know, uh, the racial makeup of past councils is, is an indicator probably. Um, and then the, the internal inputs, human resource data, hiring review, uh, how are we hiring? How are we doing the process, outreach and customer service again? So, um, really this, you know, again, some of it be driven through human resources and how we're hiring and how we're reaching out. But again, as Jewel said, to make sure that we are, you know, providing culturally sensitive customer service, so. And then some of the external partners, and I, this is just the equity task force targeting community conversations that we hope are coming up here fairly soon. Um, and then, of course, groups like Unidos, um, and, and the other members of that equity task. All right, and maybe the next slide, Sue? And again, back to the baseline data, how can we measure? Training participants, again, hate to, hate to hit the trainings hard, but again, if, if there's a lack of knowledge or if there's a lack of sort of information on the subject, then, then people should probably be made aware. Applicants from traditionally underrepresented populations, hiring advancement data, bilingual events communications, and then anything else. And again, these are just trying to get, you know, numbers to things, but I'm sure there's much more to it, so. Any thoughts, folks?
Sorry, I have thoughts. I was just trying to like wait a bit. Yeah, that's great. So I appreciate the, the attention to hiring. I think also being able to get data around, um, oh my gosh, attrition, right? So it's one thing to bring folks in, but you could hire the most diverse folks. But if people are turning over every two weeks, there's probably a reason for it. So if we're not already tracking why, so what, if we're not doing like exit interviews, for example, that would be something that we should probably do and practice. Yeah, would be, would be one. Advancement data, yep, is, is there as well. I think as a group, we should probably consider like, what are the particular social identities we want to focus on, right? So I think there's this implicit assumption around race and ethnicity as it pertains to diversity. But again, do we not also wanna pay attention to gender, gender identity? Do we wanna pay attention to sexuality? That can get tricky depending on what questions we feel is, that would be appropriate to ask as we're trying to get the data. But that would be, my, my question, right, is as a, um, a council in a city, really like what are the things that we want to be intentional with as we think about diversity, equity, um, and, and inclusion?
No, absolutely. And I think, you know, quite you adding to that, the notion of accessibility, uh, and people with, you know.
Yep, people with disabilities.
Right, yep, yep. Okay, all right. Um, what else?
I guess, again, I kinda go back to like the statement that I made around customer service of, you know, how bold do we really wanna be around this? Because I feel like, um, we can, you know, it's very normal to hear, and this is not, like, I'm not saying that someone said this at the city, but just in, um, professional land of like, oh yeah, we'll absolutely interview a diverse candidate pool. But at the end of the day, it's the most qualified person that's gonna get the job. And I really wanna see that be completely gone. And because what does qualified mean? Qualified based on the job description that we as white people wrote, as white men wrote, you know? I would really challenge, um, you know, specific positions that don't allow for, um, female. Oh my gosh, sorry, leak it, um, you know, doesn't have flexibility and schedule right now, you know, when we have people working from home that are raising kids, you know, there's, there's a reason why our workforce looks the way it does. Not just at the city, but, uh, you know, across professional America. So I just really think we have to be pretty, I, I'm really not interested in having a conversation around hiring of like, oh, we're just gonna do outreach to specific organizations to help us find diverse people. That's not at all what I'm thinking that we need to be engaged in. I think it really truly does need to be understanding why people are not applying. Do they not feel comfortable working in this environment? Et cetera. I think our department heads love them all dearly. They're all white males. You know, that says a lot about us as an organization. Maybe they were the most qualified, qualified for the job. Maybe it was through attrition, but, um, you know, I think we just have to do some real soul searching around what we wanna look like as an organization and how we're gonna take steps to get there. And it can't just be on the backs of reaching out to organizations in our community that, you know, they're not paid to do the work for us.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's, you know, absolutely true. The example of trying to hire, you know, a part-time person at the library and, and, and that, you know, it becomes a question of, you know, how is the job description written? And what I meant by outreach too is, you know, are we really getting it in the hands of people that, that could do the job? I mean, are, you know, not so much just through our partner organizations, but. Generally, you know, and, and I think, you know, just how, like we said, like you said, absolutely. I mean, a part-time job, um, you know, for some, at, at minimum wage is not gonna be too appealing to too many people. And, and you're gonna probably get, yeah, you're gonna get what you asked for in a lot of ways, but. All right. Um, anything else on the, on this here?
I think it might be interesting to do some sort of like, um, either like interview or if folks are willing, like people who are currently, uh, hired through like the city of Newburgh, like POC, BIPOC, just to see like where they're at, because if they've been working for the city of Newburgh or like what's, why are they still working for it or have they thought about like looking for a new job? Or what's appealing maybe in other places that the city of Newburgh isn't missing? And I think that might be really important, a really important piece to get. Because I don't know the exact numbers. I don't know if Dan, you or you or Rick have an idea of how many like folks or if you even keep that up, like, you know, if they identify as BIPOC or such.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, well, Dan, go ahead.
We've got some of the data. Um, I would say we don't have, um, you know, a lot of organizations in my experience, local governments in particular, given my career path, um, have, uh, human resources information, uh, software. And so they've got all that, uh, from the time you apply all the way through your termination, essentially, like all of the, the data about who you are, what you've been trained to do, all those things, and we don't have that. So, um, a lot of it is in paper. So, um, also a lot of it in the past, uh, in terms of identification has been either voluntary or, um, incomplete or inaccurate, honestly. And so the way that individuals have identified or self-identified, um, has not been terribly accurate. So, um, we're looking at improvements to that as we onboard the new software we budgeted for and are in the process of, of, uh, building out. And so we should get some of that improved and certainly that, that will be, uh, an effort over the next year, highlighting the goal, but also like just generally, who do we have on staff? What do they know? What, you know, how long have they worked for us? Any of that information, uh, outside of just diversity is super important. So, uh, it's in process, I would say, but it's also at this point paper.
All right. Um, anything else on DEI at the moment, folks?
Yeah, and one last thing. Also, I, I hear Jules and Stephanie say, Mr. Mayor, should I refer you as Mr. Mayor before speaking? You know, not trying to, the first day, can't be messing up on the first day. And maybe he's not here, he just like bounced.
He walked away.
That's hilarious.
Uh, sorry, no, no, no. Rick is fine, informal's fine, don't, don't, don't worry, Rick is, Rick is fine. And all the rest of you, just call me Rick, it's, it's.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go homie Rick.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that.
You're good. Um, so, yeah, we're talking, again, I think a lot about compositional diversity and thinking about outcomes, which is good. What might be a little bit harder to nail down, so I can already see Dan being like, I wanna hear values and give me specifics to work towards. But I think talking about culture is also important, right? Because you can have a compositionally diverse department, for example, but the culture is still dominated by particular ideals and ways of knowing and being. And so, again, that, that would take a bit more work. But I've been in areas where, again, I know, um, that there, there is a very dominant culture that keeps people from being able to do their best work, right? Whether it's around a, a culture of how we define professionalism, where people would be like, nah, Bryce, you gotta cut your hair, that doesn't look professional. Which I know my mom's watching, mom, there it is. But yeah, so professionalism could be an example of, of establishing culture that we might want to interrogate, to allow for folks to show up as them full selves and not necessarily have to be less of who they are to belong or to succeed in, in those areas. Does, does that make sense? Uh, and there are a lot of ways that we can, you know, break down understanding culture, whether through communication or through power, what have you. But again, having something that also addresses culture, um, as opposed to maybe just compositional diversity would be good.
Okay, no, I think that's great. That's, that's very, very true. And I think, but it, I think it circles around to the same thing that we're trying to say about values anyway, is that if we're saying we want it to be the best place that represents our community the best it possibly can, the greatest place to work ever, you're gonna have to have core values and culture that promotes that and sees the value of each person. So, all right. All right, um, let's see, I think that's seven o'clock, folks. It is, it's a couple ticks after seven. The, the agenda for the business session is pretty light tonight, so I've got two suggestions. Either we can come back and get sustainability, housing and, uh, urban renewal, or we can do it at a, a later work session. My apologies for it taking longer than I had, than I had thought, so my apologies.
Us to give each other some grace on this, because five hours talking about other goals. And then all of a sudden, the last five minutes, we came up with these. So they have never been flushed out, flushed out really, they've never been looked at intentionally to come to answer. So I just, I just want us to remember that, these are basically, we're starting from scratch again.
Well, I'll, I'll say something, having gone through this exercise, I actually feel that these goals are pretty darn solid. I gotta tell you.
Oh, they're good, but we didn't, we didn't do this kind of work on these goals. We just like threw some words up on the piece of paper and, and walked away, cuz it was, the time was over. Now we're getting into the deeper bits of it and what we, what those, what they mean to us.
Okay, um, well, why don't we, um, why don't we put this off, I guess, Dan? Maybe to the next available work session? I know the twenty-first is booked with, um, school bond. Or we can, um, send comments and thoughts in on the remaining goals and we can, I can put it all in, in an amended document and send it back out to you. So it's, it's really what, how you all wanna do this.
This, I will just say the conversation's been excellent, you know, and, and it's just helpful to kinda have that level of detail. I think, again, it's gonna take us a long time to, you know, especially in culture, right? Culture is embedded in who we are, what we do, and it, and it, you know, it, it needs to be built. So these conversations are really helpful. So, I mean, just to the extent to which we have, um, maybe an ongoing conversation, whether it's, you know, a future one, um, to follow up and then maybe as we, um, can maybe schedule. I, I guess I would love to see, um, and I've said this privately, I guess, to a few folks. I mean, I would love to see retreats or other, uh, opportunities for dialogue around goals and goal setting and really digging in on some of the stuff. It would, you know, amounts of time appropriate to get it all done, you know, so that we're not, uh, feeling compressed and rushed. I just think it would be super valuable along the lines of where, um, Counselor Bacon went with the, uh, Myers-Briggs, right? Of, you know, building a good board. It's like, these dialogues are so important. And so, um, I, I guess I'll just leave it there and say, you know, more please.
Was Denise, sorry, um, Rick, what, Denise, were you proposing that we hold off on the last three? I, you were kinda breaking up, so I couldn't hear.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't care so much when we do it. I just think, you know, we should give you, we haven't done this part. We've done, put the words up, get, you know, get a little idea. We haven't done any deep dives into any of this yet, really kind of figuring out what that looks like. The first day, we just threw the words on the board and left, cuz we'd worked on something else the whole time. And then we've slowly gotten a little narrower and a little narrower. But if you look at Dan's, um, you know, what he likes, he wants a goal. And if we don't tell him what that word meant, he's not gonna get that goal. It also says he likes a challenge, which explains why he's here.
Well, this, this is the first attempt at that, I think, to, to flesh it out further. Um, and so, you know, how we do it, why don't we go ahead, why don't we do this? We'll take a, a break, it's now, it's seven oh seven. Why don't we take a five-minute break, we'll start the business session. And then if we feel up to it, we can come back to, uh, sustainability, I think is next on the line. Or we can, uh, you know, let it muddle for a while and, uh, and come back to it, uh, later on. All right, cool. All right, um, go ahead and mute and, uh, sign off video, but do not sign off. And we'll be back in five minutes, which gives that to, uh, seven twelve. All right, see you at seven twelve, thank you. Let me call to order the city council business session for September eighth, twenty twenty. And I will conduct the roll call as we cannot hear our city recorder. So, Counselor Finley.
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Kofield.
Present.
And Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
And I'm here as well, so there we are. All right, the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, thank you. Now we will move on to item four A, uh, National Preparedness Month Proclamation. And it's hard to imagine this being more timely, actually. So, um, let me read it and, and a first couple of things. This is, month of September is National Preparedness Month. And with the fires everywhere in our state and adjoining states, it's very timely. And this week, the first week of September is actually Home Inventory Week as well. So allow me, if you don't mind, I will read this proclamation. National Preparedness Month, September twenty twenty proclamation. Whereas each September is recognized as National Preparedness Month and whereas Oregonians have witnessed and experienced natural disasters in our own community and whereas every community member can take active steps to protect their families and neighbors from natural and man-made disasters. And whereas every family and business in Newburgh, Oregon is encouraged to take active steps to be financially secure after a disaster. And whereas every community member is encouraged to make sure they are properly insured against fire, flood, earthquakes and storms. And whereas every community member is encouraged to create a home inventory to include part of their. And whereas every community member is encouraged to create a home inventory to include part of their disaster preparedness kit. Now therefore is proclaimed by mayor and city council and on behalf of the people of Newburgh, of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that we proclaim September 2020 as National Preparedness Month. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to seal the city of Newburgh to be affixed on this eighth day of September, 2020. All right. And again, as we said at the beginning of the work session, our, our thoughts and prayers are with those who are currently facing the disaster throughout throughout our state and the adjoining states. So be careful out there, people. All right. Um, next, the city manager's report, please, Dan.
Can I ask one question? Who has an emergency preparedness kit in their house? Which, who does?
Sort of, kind of.
I do. I good.
Good. All right. And anybody who
Truman, yeah, yeah.
Get on it.
Get started. Just one or two things, just one or two things a month by, and you'll get there really fast.
Rick, quick question. Are we allowed to, to ask questions, um, about, about this and then like the, the following things, the agenda?
Sure, sure, of course. Yeah. I don't know that we'll have answers, but we'll, we can certainly ask.
Great. I think the proclamation is great. Um, two questions. One is around, I know that starting September 15th through October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, um, part of my question would be like, to what degree are we, right, acknowledging that as well? Would this put it in conflict? I, I, I don't think it necessarily should, but I didn't know if we're allowed, uh, to have multiple proclamations. That's just a, a question. I think for some reason, like we could only have one, we might want to wrestle with that. But again, we could have multiple national heritage months or preparedness months. I think that would be, that would be great. The second question is, um, what would it mean outside of just saying we recognize this? Does this mean that we're putting funds towards pushing it out? Um, I love that we want folks to be encouraged, um, to make sure they're insured and whatnot, but are we going to be providing resources to folks that would say, hey, I'm not insured. I don't really know what that means. So where can I go to find more information? What support might I help, might I get to help me, um, in wanting to be prepared? Denise, appreciate you asking like who has kits? We also know not everyone necessarily, um, has access to all the things that everyone else has. So how might we be able to provide access to folks? Um, may be able to go out and buy, you know, a dope kit on, you know, Amazon or what have you. Um, those are.
And there are great things. I, I did one, um, with the, with the Red Cross for just Spanish speaking folks to make sure that they, um, that was all, that worked, you know, with where, where, what they would need, how they would go about it. Um, and that's all available and I did that, but it was a long time ago because it takes somebody else. Like I can bring it in once, but I can't, I'm not the one who can keep it going. I think I did it with the, the parent club, the Edwards Parent Club. Um, so yeah. I think that is necessary and sometimes to, to move that forward ourselves because in the end we're going to be the ones that are going to have to be responsible if they're not ready, right?
What about Bryce's question on whether or not we can have more than one proclamation per month? And I thought, thought I saw Truman reaching for some legal looking thing.
So it's like he's reading.
There it is.
The, um, Truman Stone City Attorney. Counselor Kofield, you are given a copy of the, uh, Council, City of Newburgh Council Rules and Guidelines. And, uh, we know you don't have them all memorized for the very first meeting, like all the rest of the council members have them.
Meeting, it will be, the second meeting will be memorized. Don't worry.
But essentially, if you look at Rule 11, Section 11, it says organizations, citizens or counselors may request proclamations that declare a specific date or dates to recognize the efforts of various community groups and individuals. You make that through the city recorder to the mayor. Uh, and then the mayor, uh, does the preparation and typically reads them at council meetings, although not always, uh, there's in my memory, there's been a few that were just written proclamations. So there, there's no reason that there couldn't be, uh, multiple ones, uh, overlapping in time.
Right. Well, with that, we might look into a National Hispanic Heritage Month coming up. So maybe, maybe our next meeting. All right. Um, any other questions on that? Yeah. Anything else? Okay. Uh, city managers report then, Dan.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate the suggestion on, uh, you know, walking the talk on, on proclamations and other, uh, resources for the community. We can definitely look into posting things like that on our website and, and part of our public information program. So I'm gonna sort of keep this relatively short. I guess I had plans to keep it even shorter until, um, the windstorm hit, uh, last night. But, uh, you know, staying on top of COVID-19, um, we continue to work on, uh, reimbursement and, and then now having received some funding from the federal level, we are in the process of implementing some projects. Um, so have ordered a bunch of laptops, have started the process of renovations in our archive and X building to try to get some, uh, workstations. And so those projects are hopefully in process and complete by the end of next month, you know, or we're trying to, to move quickly and, and with the CARES Act money, uh, have to spend that before the end of December. And so, um, you know, I think there's a little bit of money still out there on, um, unallocated, um, but looking for ways to support the community and, and spending that. The other thing related to, uh, COVID is, is working on telework policy. Um, you know, we're essentially at this point planning to extend telework through the end of the calendar year at this point, uh, depending, you know, we're, we're monitoring the, the disease in the area and a number of cases and all those sorts of things. But it seems prudent, um, we've got about, or have had about half of our staff, uh, teleworking. And to try to bring in those that we can from a, a safety standpoint, uh, so social distance, physically distance standpoint is, is great. OSHA has, um, put out some resources and, and, uh, rules that we're starting to try to adhere to already, although I don't think they've been finalized yet. But, um, require some physical separations and, and things like that, that we've modified some of our workspaces already to accommodate. So, um, that may be more important to telework because we may have fewer or, or less space in some cases, uh, to accommodate that distancing. And continue to monitor, of course, uh, any of the, the changes as the disease, um, you know, it seems to continue to get worse, uh, around holidays. So as there are these bumps in, uh, in contraction and, and all those sorts of things, we're monitoring our employees' health and, um, trying to also be mindful of service to the community. So let me talk a little bit about the storm, uh, last night. Today, uh, it looks a little bit apocalyptic out there, I will say. And having seen pictures from, uh, Colorado where, uh, I've moved from, uh, the weather went from like 90 degrees yesterday to snowing today. And I think it's going back to 90 tomorrow. Um, so, um, I think I can sum it up relatively well for all of us that I, I just, I think at this point, we'd all wish 2020 was over. But, um, given that it's not, uh, you know, we had a lot of our first, first responders, um, out last night, uh, spent a, a night working. Uh, we had a lot of our staff come in, uh, who were, uh, working from home or, or sorry, were home, enjoying the holiday to work. And so, you know, in summation, uh, TVFNR, uh, spoke to Chief Kennedy and, um, it sounded as though they have an emergency operations center, um, throughout their service territory, coordinating their response, because obviously there are a lot of brush fires, structure fires, all kinds of things that are, uh, popping up. And so they're, uh, monitoring things in the area. They did say that, um, there were not really that many, uh, severe calls in the area, which I guess some, uh, folks take some solace. I don't, I'm not sure, um, given what's out there, but there was one major structure fire near Newburgh on, uh, Wilsonville Road. Um, I think that homeless completely consumed. Uh, so, you know, definitely very sorry to, to hear that, but, um, the police dispatch center had 161, uh, 911 calls, uh, last night. And, um, the majority of those, um, it sounded like were related to the winds and, uh, you know, ensuing chaos, which not terribly surprising. The Public Safety Building did lose power, we think for about eight or nine hours, most of the night, um, and was on generator power. The typically the calls, I guess, it sounds like they're the majority of the calls, uh, traffic hazards, you know, trees and, and that sort of thing, uh, tree branches, alarms and, and open doors and things like that, that probably related to the wind blowing and, and that sort of thing. Things that involve trees hitting, uh, structures and, uh, vehicles, which is unfortunate. Um, and that wires were down, that sort of thing. So the, the police were quite busy, public works, uh, the employees in question who had to come in, um, you know, about 7:30 or so, when the winds really started to kick up in the area. We have on-call staff who are, are paid to essentially answer the phone in these kinds of situations where our on-call for the night came in about 7:30, uh, after receiving a 911 call that there was a tree down. Within a short period of time, there were five staff that were on staff, essentially on site, uh, working from about 7:30 or so until about 2:30 AM. Uh, so that crew essentially was on tree, uh, removal detail. Again, there was a lot to, to deal with. So really appreciate the work that, uh, Public Works, uh, did in, in helping people get around and, uh, removing some of those, those hazards in the community. Essentially worked the entire night on that, including, uh, it sounds like with PG&E, um, they had about 12 responses to tree-related issues. Three downed wires, one call, uh, the roof damage, six street sign, uh, calls and, um, a downed street light. So, um, a lot of chaos, uh, in a short period of time. And, uh, I think the winds are supposed to be kicking back up if they haven't already. And it, it still looks terrible out there. So, um, you know, definitely hoping, uh, praying for, for better weather, for change in, uh, in the wind and, and weather pattern. We did have a power loss, I mentioned in Public Safety Building, uh, we had power losses, uh, throughout the community, but also, uh, for lift stations, five of our, our lift stations in the wastewater system lost power. We were able to restore those, but it was about three o'clock by the time they were, um, the power was restored. The plant power came back on about 5:00 AM. Um, so, you know, the system worked. We had enough, um, you know, we had staff on site, uh, working to make sure that it continued to work. Obviously it helped that it was overnight, um, so people weren't using the toilet hopefully as much, but in, in essence, didn't have failures, um, due to the power outages. So again, want to thank our, our staff for being on top of this. Water system, same kinds of issues that until the power was out, we lost, um, we, we moved from, um, the reservoir, uh, resource to other water and had some issues with water pressure and then those kinds of things. And so, um, it again, wasn't until about 5:00 AM, 4:30, and when we got power back on and were able to kind of restore operations. We did, throughout the day, we've gotten a number of, uh, requests for resources from, uh, folks in Marion County or to help people in, in Marion County. You know, they're dealing with a couple of fires in that area in the county that are, are moving quickly. And so we're coordinating now, I think through, um, the Yan Hill County Emergency Manager, Brian Young, but also, um, trying to, to provide whatever resources we can, both for housing and then for food or other things. And so haven't really seen any definitive as to people who are going to relocate, uh, and evacuate from that area to Newburgh. But we're trying to be as helpful as possible. So, so again, coordinating the resources that we can. I think that's generally it as far as the fire related and or wind related issues, um, you know, other work, um, related to the topics at hand, uh, in the work session. We did, or I did, uh, finally finalize a contract with, um, Ty Harden Moore to do an equity assessment or an equity audit. Took, uh, a little bit of time and I apologize for that, but, um, you know, essentially that assessment, uh, the scope of work is such that she'll do assessments through, um, number of, of sort of paperwork processes, I guess you would call it, and and looking at our demographics, looking at some of our policies, looking at how we contract, looking at, um, you know, what our, uh, regulations, I guess, look like to the public. Um, so really looking at establishing baseline for equity throughout the city operations and, um, hopeful that that will get kicked off next week. Trying to really do what we can to gather the information now to also kick it off with staff to get, um, their expectations set and, um, just kind of get, get moving on it. My expectation based on talking to Ty, that it's a three to four month process at this point. As you might imagine, uh, everybody in diversity, equity and inclusion work is quite busy. And, um, her time has gone from, you know, oh, it'll be a couple of months to, you know, double that. So, I would assume that that correlates to the amount of requests she has for her time. Happy to have that done and, and moving forward though. One other thing, um, really the, the last thing on my, my notes is, uh, just a quick update on, uh, hiring process. Did meet with our recruiter on the, uh, Assistant City Manager Human Resources Recruitment. That also relates to what we were talking about before in terms of who do we want, what do we want, and the importance of, uh, human resources on our culture. The, uh, way that it works, I guess, the recruiter will, uh, call down the list. We had 128 applicants for this position. We talked about nine. And so she's done a fair amount of legwork, uh, breaking that list down. And we are moving forward with interviews in a physically distanced COVID-safe environment, but on premise, um, on the 18th. So we'll look to do those in about two weeks. My hope is to be able to select somebody in that process or in, in that day, um, to really come out of it with a finalist. So we shall cross our fingers. Um, but just a quick demographic of what we got in terms of the, uh, the folks who applied, 128 applicants, 109, I believe, filled out the demographic, uh, information that the recruiter sent around. So it's not a complete snapshot, but, but pretty close. Um, we had applicants from 29 different states. About 55 or so were from Oregon. Um, so obviously the majority were regional, but, um, people from all over, mostly the West, but, um, I think the number two was Texas, uh, which is in my mind, not the West. But, um, the, the other states that, uh, you know, you would expect California, Washington were, uh, three and four. The gender mix was about 31% female, 66% male and 3% who chose not to identify. And, um, I will say the finalists, um, that we're bringing in, uh, they definitely tilt female right now. You know, and I think, uh, Counselor Yarnell Holloman mentioned, um, the department head makeup now. Um, and I'm not sure I would agree that it's completely white male, but it is white for sure. Um, so we're, we are definitely needing to diversify there. But I would say that it's a personal goal to, to add some diversity through these, uh, the public works recruitment, uh, this recruitment and you know, to continue to, to focus on that. And so, uh, the best candidate shall win out, but, um, again, what you, as you said, what we're looking for and, and the values we're looking for are also part of what makes you the best candidate. So, uh, we shall see and should have an update, um, hopefully at our next meeting as to who we've made an offer to. Bryce, you're, uh, yeah, you don't have to raise your hand for me.
Love it, Dan. Um, so something Denise said earlier was a question around, or like using a question around demonstrated ability in the interview process. And so I'm curious, um, I mean, as much as you can, you're not trying to put, you know, all your secrets out there. How, so my question is how, um, you are going to inquire as to the applicant's demonstrated ability to pursue diversity, equity, inclusion in their previous roles, in, in that sense?
So one of the things
Diversity is good, right? So we won't be thinking about that, but ultimately most of looking for like a level of competence. Because even more effective than having to train someone in D E I is bringing someone who already has that lens. So that, that's what I'd be curious about.
So one of the things that we did with the, um, sort of semifinalist group, I would say, is the recruiter and I agreed on three questions to send them for writing samples, essentially. See how they think, how they write, you know, relatively brief, uh, writing sample. The first question on that was essentially, uh, what have you done to, um, you know, how, what do you believe is diversity, equity and inclusion? And what have you done to, um, to, to bring that to your organization? What have you done to, to further that in your career? And so, you know, many of them took the full page, you know, sort of the page limit, uh, for per question thing. And, and so there's some who have, um, question thing, and so there's some who have, you know, one actually presented an entire diversity, equity and inclusion plan that they developed with a committee at a previous job, others, you know, really opined a lot about what they saw as, you know, the importance, but then had less to say about what they had done, but moved forward those who had done more, right? You know, action matters, and I totally agree with what you're saying. The other piece is behavioral interviewing is pretty common for local government in particular, and that's certainly how we'll plan to, you know, ask questions, what have you done, you know, tell us about a time. That's very common, and so we're working on some of those questions now. So I guess I would, you know, offline, maybe so that we can be sneaky about the questions. If you have some suggestions, I would welcome those. I'm in the process of trying to push some questions to our recruiter, who will probably develop the actual list, you know, will finalize, but she'll, she'll work on it. So if you have some suggestions, I'd be happy to take those.
You know, I do. I got you.
Awesome.
All right, any other questions for Dan? Two things, Dan, any word on the West Rock sale and any other news on Crestview Crossing progress?
The, I can say on the West Rock sale, it is moving forward. You know, I'm not sure I can say much more than that, you know, but it is moving forward and it seems like in a positive way, you know, so we shall see. You know, I think the, as far as Crestview, I don't have a specific update on that right now. You know, Doug is off for a few well-earned weeks, and so, you know, I think that we, we shall see, you know, there's time, you know, they're doing a lot of the earthwork, obviously, and so hopefully we will have some time to assure that there's some, whether it's the deed restricted units or that they'll, you know, essentially come forward with an excise tax payment or something like that when the council adopts an excise tax, assuming the council adopts an excise tax, sorry. But, but that has not been, there's not been clarity on that yet.
So, you know, as I mentioned to you offline before, the fair number of questions coming on Crestview Crossing, it's a, we're in a lot of dirt, there's a lot going on out there. So I think there are people that are curious, so.
And I think the graphic did reach out today and Karen gave them some, some information, so I know there's an article probably forthcoming on that as well. So I totally get that there's a lot of interest and certainly the graphic picking it up, there'll be probably even more after people read it.
I like the fact that people are suggesting what stores they'd like to see come in, which I always thought was always good, you know, it's like, yeah.
Aspirational, right?
That's right, aspirational, sure. All right, all right, anything else for, for Dan, folks?
So I have something, and I'm not sure if it's for Dan or Issue Tracker, which is kind of both, so. And I know this is, I want to be sensitive to people who are dealing with a lot of property damage and some emergency issues, but I noticed when I was downtown today that the POW flag that's flying outside of City Hall has taken quite a beating and probably needs to be replaced. And then the one, and I don't know if it belongs to us or the post office, but the POW, it's interesting, the POW flag outside of the post office also is looking pretty beat up, and so I just wanted to kind of pass that along for what it's worth.
We can get those replaced, yeah, no, I appreciate that. We don't have eyes everywhere, so I appreciate the awareness.
Anything else, folks, for Dan? All right, let's go ahead and open the public comments section of the evening. All right, Sue, so you have people on the line? Yes, all right, why don't we start with Rebecca Wallace? Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, how is everyone tonight?
It's fine, given the fact that it's Armageddon out there, but other than that, doing well.
It sure is, I feel bad for all those folks that are being displaced. I would like to talk about the speed in the downtown business district. The, the traveling speed. What I've noticed in cities like McMinnville and St. Paul, Silverton, Staton, those business districts have dropped their speed to twenty miles per hour. And I know this, the St. Paul, my father-in-law was the mayor there for a while, but he petitioned, because it's also, I think it was two nineteen, he petitioned the ODOT for reducing the speed to twenty miles per hour because of the necessary reduction to make it safe. And it's, it's really curious to me that we still have such a, you know, high rate of speed really for the amount of businesses that we have and how many crosswalks we have. It's, it's really dangerous for folks to cross the street there. You know, they have to wait for traffic to stop, and sometimes if the first row stops or the, you know, all, all the way to the left lane stops, they have to wait to make sure that the middle lane will stop, and then also to make sure that the far-right lane stops and they don't get run over in the process. So is it possible that our city applies for reducing that speed of twenty-five to twenty in that business district? That's what I have to say today.
Awesome, well, thank you, and, you know, I'm sure we will try to look into it, you know, again, the petition to ODOT. And let me ask, who was, who was your relative that was the mayor in St. Paul?
Kim Wallace.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, all right, very good. All right, well, thank you, thank you very much for the suggestion, I'm sure Dan and company will look into it, so, so thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, and then I think we've got Diane Chong also, not on the line. Okay, all right, then, otherwise I've got a letter that Marta Suppi-Navetta would like to read into the record. Let me grab that. Okay, so here it is. And this has to do with speeding on River Street. Hello, my name is Marta Suppi-Navetta, I've lived in Newburgh since 2011 and have spent the last seven years living on River Street. We've noticed a huge increase in speeders racing down river going either direction. We expect some level of noise living on a busier road, but recently has been becoming dangerous. I am concerned with the increase of speeding while every kid is home, often playing outside, riding bikes or going on walks. There are regular middle-of-the-night car races. We have seen multiple cars run stop signs either at Fifth or Sixth Street, one of which caused a bad accident a few weeks ago. Is often the same cars every day over and over. We are excited for the urban renewal plans at the mill and river, but are concerned that traffic speed might get worse with the road being updated to be wider and with bike lanes. I'm asking the council to do what you can to help keep the people on River Street safe from reckless drivers. Right. Well, Ms. Suppi-Navetta, thank you, thank you very much for your, for your comments. And again, I'm sure we will look into it. I know that there was, there is a traffic change coming in the next day or two on River and Sixth, I believe, it's four-way stop, or it will be, so that should improve at least that cross area. But again, thank you for taking the time to, to comment. All right, anything else on public comments, Sue, or anyone else? No, nothing, okay, all right, public comments is closed, and let's move to the consent calendar. If I could, I should have done this earlier, if I can ask to pull seven C from, from consent, I'll just, I'll make a statement about it later. But anyway, on the consent calendar items A, B, D and E. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Stephanie.
I'd like to move to adopt the consent calendar, A, B, D and E.
Do we have a second? Second, Jules. All right, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All right, Denise, did you vote? There it is, all right, that's, that's all of us, Sue. All right, and then on, on seven C, I don't know that I mentioned this before, but my day job, as you all know, I work for Habitat for Humanity, and a part of my job, a large part of my job, is seeking funding, donations in kind and the like from various businesses in town. And after communicating with the Ethics Commission, I've been told that that part is fine, because none of the gifts are coming directly to me, but that I should declare any time that I have something where I've either dealt with someone, a business that we've dealt with in the past or might in the future. So in the case of Saunders Company, I've worked with them, they've done work for Habitat in the past, and Todd Saunders and Karen are actually neighbors across the street. So that is my declaration of potential conflict, so there you are. Otherwise, I will entertain, yep, Bryce.
Sorry, I had a few questions about them, not enough to where I, I wouldn't support them, I know we already voted, but I had a few questions I was hoping to ask, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask them, or what you feel is that would be, would be best.
Yeah, well, customarily during consent, if it goes to consent unless you pull it off, then it's assumed to be a vote without discussion, I believe. And, but if not, you're welcome to ask questions now, but that's just the general with consent.
Got you, okay.
Fire away.
Sure, and just for, for the future, so if I do have questions ahead of time, it's recommended that I email in those, those questions, or is it best practice to pull it off, ask questions?
You can certainly do either one, you can send questions through me if you'd like, that's probably the easiest way to make sure that it gets a response. You know, typically it communicates all those kinds of things from a protocol standpoint, just shared information. But, yeah, no, that's, it's probably easier to do it ahead of time and easier from a process standpoint, you know, if it's consent, to just continue to move through the one vote for all, all items on consent kind of concept.
That makes sense. And if I pull things off to ask questions, can they be put back on?
They get voted for separately, you know, once it's pulled off of consent, so this item that was pulled off will get voted on separately, so the other items are approved and then you have a separate vote.
I see, okay, okay, so the initial questions, again, I really don't want to take up more time or space, so around KJ, oh my gosh, I believe that is B, is that right? Wait, let me make sure I have it here.
I think it was A.
A, sorry, yes, uh-huh, yep, yep, Kennedy and Jenkins Consultants. So it looked as though, so it was defined as the most qualified with the most expertise, so I'd just be curious just again, how that was defined, because it was noted that there's thirty-two percent that was higher around the consultation fee for quote-unquote need to include site selection. And so I know that there were, what, fifteen or fourteen other bids, and so I'd just be curious if they also had included that consultation fee, so if that's consistent, if not, as, as to why. And then, let's see, there was, there was also a piece that talked about current fiscal budget, and so I was just curious, it's around, it sounds like right now the current budget is enough to be able to pay for both the property as well as a consultation. And so I was just curious around like what the budget implications of that would mean, should we agree to enter into, well, we already have agreed, now that we have agreed, like, really, what that, what that means? Do those questions make sense?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Karen Hoffman, who's city engineer, answer those, because I think she's probably got the most direct knowledge.
Great, thank you.
Right, so, good evening. So the way it works when we're hiring a consultant, and mostly it's a design consultant, there are specific rules, we can't actually ask for the fee upfront, we have to hire the most qualified organization or company based on what we call the request for proposal or qualifications that we, we send out. And then there's a process, we normally have anywhere from five to seven people review all of the proposals that we receive and score them based on the, normally it's project approach, the, the experience of the consultants, that they understand what we're asking for, those types of things. So some are always better than others, but there is, it is a very objective process until we get, and so then we will choose that, that top firm based on those, all those scores put together, and then what we do is we go back and then we negotiate with them for price. So the price comes, in this scenario, the price comes after the fact. And if, if we can't agree on a price, or it's outside of our budget, then we can throw them out and then go to the next one down the list, if that makes sense. Does, did that answer that question for you?
Yes, yeah, so that, that definitely makes sense, and I'm, yeah, I think my initial spot is like, how, like, it seems kind of odd that you can't ask for a price upfront, but my guess is that's like a built-in maybe to like the culture of the process, which, you know, I'm always about questioning the culture, but in this, but this case, we'll trust the authority of your wisdom in this area.
Yeah, it's actually state law right now that we, so in all other ways, for most public improvements, for getting contractors and that kind of stuff, it's actually a low bid, unless the council chooses another method. But specifically for engineers, architects, those types of things, you're, they want to hire, you want to hire based on qualifications, not necessarily price. In that scenario, sometimes you get what you pay for, so that's been the concern. And then there's also a concern on the other side about, you know, some firms may be more qualified, but then they may be charging more too, so there's a balance in there. But right now, it's state law is, we can't even ask the price until we've decided who the most qualified is.
Yep, that makes sense. My next question is around B, so this is, yeah, 2023697, if I read it correctly, there was only one bid for this, is that accurate? Do you have an idea of why that might be? It seemed as though the timeline for accepting bids was pretty consistent with some of the other resolutions, but they had, you know, fifteen for A, there was nothing with seven, nothing with five, and so, you know, probably just wondering like, why there's only one? Do we have an option of potentially extending the timeline to receive other bids? We might not be able to, you know, I just am curious as to why there's, there's only one.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to always know why, sometimes it could be just because it's late in the season, people are busy, concrete work is actually pretty busy all over the state right now, so the Oregon Department of Transportation entered into a settlement to fix all of their ADA ramps all over the state, and so concrete contractors are in high demand right now. And then Concrete Solutions, who actually got this contract, does a lot of work in town, and actually they're one of the best out there. So it didn't concern me that we only got one. If it had been somebody else, I might have been more concerned and, and might have recommended either we throw out all the bids or reject them all, which we do have that option, and then start over or what, but again, with this contractor, we were comfortable and they've done a lot of work in town, that they'll do good work for us.
Yeah, that's good, and if you say the best, I'm gonna believe you, Karen, that's great. My la, my last question is just in, in general, in looking at all the bids, do we know if any or how many of the bids were by companies or organizations that are owned by people of color or women?
We don't ask that, that has not been part of our purchasing practices, although we, we could certainly make it a part of our, I know the state does have like a minimum minority thresholds that they like to hit. You know, we also have to be careful in the sense of, are there qualified contractors out there? And there are quite a few, but a lot of times the generals are not and they're hiring subcontractors in to come in, so, but we don't have any of those thresholds in our current purchasing rules, but we could certainly add them if we wanted to. So I don't have that information.
Yeah, no, that's okay, and I actually be curious to see what that process would look like to include those thresholds, because looking at, you know, a number of these contracts, right, that range from a hundred to upwards, I think, solve like a million-dollar bids, imagine that, you know, that might be a way in which we, we also begin to integrate DEI into, you know, how we do businesses, considering where are we spending, where are we spending our money?
We can certainly do that, look at what the state does, how they work it, and then bring it back to the council to see if you would like to implement that and incorporate that into the purchasing rules.
Yeah, that's great, thank you for that.
The contracting is part of the assessment that Ty is gonna do, so, you know, that whole purchasing process is included in that scope, so I would imagine there'll be some recommendations, exactly what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, please, chairman.
So, public contracting is a very interesting.
public contracting is a very interesting legal area, which is a combination of state laws, as Karen described, as well as local law passed through ordinances reflected in the code. One of the projects that the finance director is working on, it has on the horizon, is taking a fresh look at our contracting code. It's something that I've been working with him on. I don't, I don't know that we have any kind of timeline on that, because it's a fairly big project and a lot of other pressing work. But that would be something that would, those changes would be, come back to the council as a council-level enactment to pass the ordinance setting the local contracting rules. So that could be something that the council could see, not in the next few months, but perhaps in the next year or two.
Thank you, Truman. And, sorry, Karen, I think I said Karen, I apologize.
All right, any?
No worries.
All right, other questions on any of these? All right, let's go, then. We've still got item 7C, then. Up, Sue's waving. We didn't vote. Did we vote on the consent calendar? No, all right, yes, we did. Yes, we did. We did.
We didn't vote on what you pulled off, so you have to vote on what you pulled off.
That's where I am right now, 7C. All right, 7C, Resolution 2020-3683. A resolution authorized the city manager to enter into a construction contract with the Saunders Company for the 2020 sewer rehab project. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Stephanie.
I would like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2020-3683.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Denise with a second. Nice try, Bryce, you gotta be quicker, though. All right, Denise, all right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, I got everybody except me, I'm gonna abstain, Sue, for the aforementioned reason. So there you go. All right, moving now on to item eight, Council Committee Reports. Anyone, any reporting out on things you've been up to? I'll start. How's that? So the Equity Task Force in town met on September 2nd, was our last meeting. The thrust of it at this point, or what we're hoping is to, in addition to getting the information from Ty Hardenmore, when that comes through on the equity audit at the city, the other is to try to set up a series of small listening sessions. The committee felt that it would be best if it was people from the community, so we've reached, I've reached out to Isa and Inez Pena to see if they would like to be involved with this process, and to try to bring these together. They're thinking four to five, so between students on campus, and then people like from Edwards Elementary Parent Group, the Virginia Garcia Patient Group, and others at the school district, to try to get some idea of what might improve city operations for traditionally underrepresented populations. So that is the main focus, and I hope we'll have more news on when those will happen, and the structure, the questions, and also a couple of folks are working on the questions. And I think Isa is getting through, she's super busy now until the middle of the month. She's distributing something like $22 million right now through the Oregon Workers Relief Fund, so she's got lots to do. But that should be wrapped up at about the middle of the month, and then we'll see how that goes from there. Bryce?
Love it, love the idea. Have there been conversations around what it would look like to, for lack of a better term, compensate folks who are giving their time and frankly, like their expertise and lived experiences for the betterment of our city and community? I imagine there, as I'm seeing some head nods, but if not, that would be for sure a question.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that was brought up, actually, one of our first questions is to, first off, if you're going to ask someone to do something like this and facilitate, that they should be compensated, first off, as the consultants. So that certainly, but then also, I haven't really spoken about it to Isa or the group, but yes, I think some form of compensation for whoever is going to take their hour or two out of their day to do this. You know, I don't know that it'd be straight compensation. I think that might get Matt and the Finance Department a little bit concerned, but if it was something on the order of gift cards, et cetera, I think something like that could probably happen. And I, yeah, I would applaud that. I think that'd be great, because again, we're asking people, in some cases, as I know Bryce and I, we've talked about this, sometimes sharing some of their deepest, darkest moments, and we want to make sure that we're real respectful of that, and people's time, of course. So, yeah, it's a great suggestion, though. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the other one you could do, you know, again, straight compensation's tricky, is to maybe go back to folks that are participating and asking them what would feel honoring of their time as opposed to us, you know, potentially assuming what the best way to honor them would be.
Right, yep, again, very good, right, very good thought, awesome. And then I think the next, we meet again, I hope, on September 30th. You know, there's some urgency to want to get this going for any number of reasons. I know that folks on the campus particularly would like to see things move as, you know, as the, given the environment that we live in. So, and I think that's a good point. So hopefully, we'll be able to push through and get something going soon after September 30th, so. All right, anybody else? Any other updates on any of that type of stuff? Anything?
Not a whole lot, but I attended the Parkway Committee, which is bypass stuff. It is what it is. They're working very hard on the vision of it. It's just that it costs a lot of money. And so I think they're doing good work in terms of figuring out what it's gonna look like and who it's gonna impact, and, you know, all of that kind of stuff, but we're waiting on money.
All right, Elise, what about, what about, we're, potential road trip coming up to see some housing, right?
Yes, sure, I'll share about that. Rick and myself are going to be traveling to see the Veterans Village here in a couple days. What day is that? Monday's day, a couple days, next week? So we're really hopeful to be able, I go one day at a time. We're really hopeful to be able to have some sort of housing in the Providence property, but also some other similar temporary housing projects in the mix. North Valley Friends is going live here really soon, so really excited to be able to work with them too. Leslie Murray deserves huge kudos, and we're gonna work with her at Providence. I mean, we'll do that, Rick. So I'm hoping that we can all sort of have some sort of temporary housing consortium almost. So I'm really excited to be able to go tour with the Portland Humbleters Foundation.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be, that'll be fun. And a couple other shout-outs on that for the North Valley, to the high school kids who originally built the tiny home, and to Habitat for Humanity volunteers for finishing it up. So there you go. So, yeah, it takes a community, you know, so there you go. But that is exciting. Anybody else, anything else? All right, all right, moving along.
Mr. Mayor, I just, this is, I just got an alert that there is a new fire burning between Hillsborough and Newburgh. And so I just want to caution people to be on the lookout, because it looks like it's getting closer. And some of our neighbors, it looks like in Sherwood and surrounding areas, may need to evacuate. So just want people to make sure your friends and family are safe and start with your emergency preparedness plans immediately.
On Peak Road at this point, yeah, I'm just trying to locate it myself.
Yeah, boy, that's scary up there, too. I mean, that's, yeah, boy, okay, yeah. Anyone, anything else, anybody? All right, well, we're, we've got a couple goals we discussed. I don't even know that we can, now that I, we did not advertise that we were going to discuss goals except during work session. I don't know that we can even go back into them now. Truman, what do you think about that?
Yes, you can continue those on without any problem.
All right, given that, how do y'all feel? Do you want to tackle more? Do you want to put it off for now? It's now 8:05.
I'm down to discuss more. I think Denise also said a good suggestion, or I think Dan also maybe brought up the idea of a retreat, in, you know, maybe having dedicated time per goal, where we can also do some preparation ahead of time. Because while, you know, I think we have some good ideas around all of them, I know I could benefit from knowing, like, hey, we're really gonna go deep into this particular one, and then try to solicit feedback from other folks in the community to inform that conversation.
Yeah, it sounds good. I think, you know, if you want to go that route, if you folks have comments, you know, on, I've gotten most of the comments down for the first couple of goals. If you want to go through the others, I can happily throw them into a document. So we'll have them in one place, and pleased to do that. The one thing I did, one thought I did have on this notion of culture and values. I think, and in many ways, to me anyway, so customer service, DEI, sustainability, housing affordability, all to me speak to values and culture. So just however that works into it. And I think that that, at least in my opinion, was part of what we were trying to do with the goals, and the admission that they are, you know, cultural changes in some ways. So, but that was, that was a part of the thinking, so. But how do y'all feel? Does that sound good? You can go through the remaining goals, and any thoughts, concepts, whatever. We can just put them all in one document and then go after them in the future. Does that work? All right, okay, then, otherwise.
For me, I have my sustainability one already done.
Good for you. You're ahead of the curve. You're ahead of the class at this point. All right. All right, otherwise, yeah, now more than ever, please do be careful, everybody out there, please. Keep, look, take an eye, you know, keep an eye on your neighbors to make sure, make sure people are doing okay. It's pretty crazy time, so be careful. Anything else for the good of the order? And again, also for the folks.
Good question, but I think it can be helpful for people, because they might be like me and not know the answer to this. So when we get alerts for, like, public information, if you signed up through the government website, if there's no service, will it go over Wi-Fi?
It depends, probably, I would assume that text should be able to go through. It depends on what you signed up for, I think. Call may not come through, but I think texts are more reliable in case when you don't have Wi-Fi.
Anything else, folks? Okay, yeah, and of course, to the folks that are out there fighting the fires and responding to the calls and trimming the trees and doing all of that, be careful out there, folks, and they're gonna have some long nights. They've already had a couple long days and long nights coming, so, all right. Otherwise, that's all we got, I think. Well, that's a wrap for this evening. We'll see you all on the 21st, I think, is our next meeting, and if not before. So be careful, keep up all of your good works. Don't stop doing good works, and we'll see you soon. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.